... meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 2nd. And we've got Taylor online, and I believe, is Mr. Quillacy online as well?
Wait a minute.
Nah, yeah?
I'm having a hard time hearing, one moment.
Okay.
So, attending in person, Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
We can hear, barely hear you, Sherri.
We can't hear you, Sherri.
Okay, we're working on the sound here. Okay, so Vice Chair Trent here, Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
And our new Commissioner, Bobby Graham.
Here.
And it looks like Commissioner Bennett is not in attendance yet, and we have our Chair Quillacy attending virtually, who has not logged in yet.
Okay. All right, well, let's, we'll move forward then. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, Judy, if you don't mind.
Happy to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and approval of the agenda? Anybody have any concerns, or? There's Mr. Quillacy. How you doing, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening. Approval of the agenda, Lucas?
No changes.
No changes, all right, good deal. All right, so let's go to public communications, again, this is public communications for things that are not on the agenda for tonight. So if anybody has anything to speak about that is not on the agenda, come forward. Any raised hands? No, okay, all right.
On the internet?
Oh, online, anybody online, raised hands? Again, not on the agenda?
No.
No, okay, perfect. All right, so, let's move to, hey, Jamie, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good to see you, sir.
Excuse me for making my.
Yes, 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 first, before we get started, I wanted to introduce Robert Graham, our newest Commissioner, welcome, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We're, we're very happy to have you. And, thank you, thank you, thank you. And Robert, do you mind telling folks just a bit about your background?
Yeah, absolutely, appreciate the opportunity. I grew up in a town called Roseville in Northern California, back then it was maybe three and a half times the size of Ojai currently. My dad was on the Planning Commission and then City Council, my mom worked for the city of Roseville, she actually worked in the planning department on, on housing elements, and so, I grew up in a family and a community that was very involved civically, and I went to Sac State for government, I ended up working in the state legislature as a Capitol Fellow for an Assembly Member where I got three bills signed into law.
Nice.
That led me to, to law school, and in law school I, I worked on some affordable housing policy and a couple other projects, and after I moved to Ojai in 2015, and I've just been biding my time, you know, to, to get involved, and finally the opportunity came through, so thank you again for everyone who helped get me here. Excited to be here.
That's awesome, we're very lucky to have you. Very cool, awesome, all right. Let's do consent items. Meetings are the regular Planning, Planning Commission meeting for September 4th, anybody have any items that they wanted to discuss regarding the last, for our, for our meeting minutes? Any changes?
No changes.
No changes? Okay, can I get a, a motion?
I moved the acceptance of the minutes.
Second.
All right, we'll accept the consent items. All right, so let's move on to our discussion item. First, we'll-
Should we take a vote on the minutes?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Should we take a vote on the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, let's take a vote on the minutes.
Go ahead, Sherri.
Bennett? Bennett?
This is for the meeting, the minutes.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quillacy?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, cool, so let's discuss disclosure of site visits, ex parte contacts. Judy?
Yes, I visited the site and had a tour given to me by one of the owners, Jeremy.
Same, so familiar with the site, I did get a tour of the facility from Jeremy as well.
I got a tour of the site from Jeremy, and had just discussed what their thoughts were about the way in which it was going to be developed, and that was this morning.
No ex parte contacts?
Perfect.
Okay, and I had a tour with, with Jeremy some weeks ago, and an explanation of their thoughts about what would go on with the facility if approved.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Lucas, you want to walk us through it?
Glad to. So, the item tonight is a discussion item, it's a concept review, and the address is 107 North Ventura Street at the corner of Matelaha and Ventura. It's a single-story building, about 10,000 square feet in total square footage, the lot is about .6 acres in size. Historically, the site has been home to City Hall, a church, most recently, a online university referred to as World, World University, that closed its doors a few years ago and really has not had any other uses in that building. It was renovated in 2018, however, never occupied, so the site itself remains as it was renovated in 2018. That's just kind of the brief history of this site itself. The proposal that's before you as a concept review, now, I should also preface this with, as a concept review, there is no decisions being made tonight, this is, this is a wonderful opportunity to get feedback from not only the Planning Commission, but also from the community. We've had several letters come in on, on both ends identifying support for the concept review as a proposed use, and then there's been some concerns raised, the nice thing about the concept review is allows staff, as well as the applicants, to go back and took a look at those concerns, and see how much merit and weight there are to those, to those concerns prior to them determining whether to move forward with their full project. The proposal itself is basically a repurposing or adaptive reuse of the site, very minimal exterior changes are proposed, really it's just color and very minor exterior changes, no square footage being added, there are some opportunities, for instance, the parking area towards the back has a proposal, and actually, let me, let me also share a screen, I've got a small little PowerPoint that has the site plan and some other pieces attached to it as well, which I think will be helpful. All right, so here you can see the site itself, like I said before, it's about 10,000 square feet in total area, and that includes both the building as well as that residential building to the north and to the west. In terms of repurposing that back parking lot area, which is this area in green down below, if I can show, a little cursor here, see it here, it's looking to be transformed into a garden oasis with lush landscaping, hot tubs and, and cold plunge as well. The use itself is actually, is, is going to be a house spa and, and kind of fitness area, and it's to support Hotel Arobar, which is currently in renovations and nearing completion for opening, so there's an opportunity here, have the applicant speak to how they were able to get a hold of this property and kind of the, the reasons and rationale for the purposing, for the repurposing of this site. What we've got before us here is two, two areas for, for modification, which are the two green areas that you see here, I highlighted the first one, the second one is this other kind of half courtyard area that opens up to Ventura Street, and that will include a proposed fence to kind of wall off that specific area and make it a little more intimate. The parking on the north side that you see there, that's not proposed to be changed at all, it currently is angled parking, eight parking spaces in total, including one handicap space. The two spaces to the north and to the west would remain as well, and that's really kind of in support of that residential use that's on-site as well. The use proposal is, is an interesting one, because it's looking to merge both the, the uses and the occupation of the hotel itself, Hotel Arobar, and providing an opportunity for, for locals to use this space as well. So they're calling it a peak demand period and an off-peak demand period, the peak period is really kind of a Friday to Sunday that's really dedicated for guests of the hotel. Once checkout takes place at, on Sunday, then it's opened up for the community, and that's a Sunday afternoon to really close of business on Thursday. So, there's kind of this mixture of opportunity for both the hotel guests as well as local residents to take advantage of this space. And as a spa, you've got spa treatment areas, you've got storage, you have weight room, locker rooms, and obviously, like I said before, there's hot tubs, cold plunge, steam room, really kind of the full, full gambit of what we typically see for a spa. The, from a planning and zoning standpoint, the zoning actually does not expressly identify the use as being allowed, so, the applicant came forward with, through the concept review, a proposal for a zone change and general plan amendment. The site itself is currently zoned with a land use designation of PL, which is public, quasi-public, which is, in a nutshell, allowing for, and you typically see schools and, and parks within this, within this zone or land use designation. There's offshoots, such as the one we're seeing here, however, at one point this was a school, so it fit within that kind of personnel and, and use category. As a zone change, land use designation shift, the applicant is looking to potentially go into the VMU category or Village Mixed Use, which allows for a lot more flexibility in how this use, or this site ends up getting used into the future. It already, we already have VMU located directly to the north, so having that transition to the south across Matelaha is appropriate, and likely something that could be supported moving forward. Haven't done the full analysis for it, but just at the surface, there's a lot of positives to that. The interesting thing with the VMU is it still would require a conditional use permit, given the use that we're looking at here. As they brought that forward, staff had the opportunity to kind of do, not necessarily a deeper dive, but just to kind of scrape the surface of what other possibilities exist within our code, and there is a, an opportunity through a conditional use permit process that wouldn't require a zone change or land use designation change, that is something we're, I'm referring to as a, as a findings of similar use, or identifying a use of similar quality, not exact quality, that is compatible with this area and the surrounding land use designations or uses themselves. That path would still lead to, as a discretionary review, for a conditional use permit, regardless. The difference with the VMU, land use designation and zone change is, that can't be, that doesn't stop here, you as a body or recommendation, and then it goes to City Council for final determination, as a discretionary action. Sequels on, is in play on both instances, as well as, as the gambit that is within Sequa as well. Oh, lastly, there is another piece, I would call it somewhat a house cleaning piece, this site is actually broken up into two lots, and on the left-hand side of this site plan, you can see a residence and some, and what looks like a, a smaller building kind of to the south and to the west. Between those, between the residential building and the main building is a line, you're not seeing it here, but it exists, and so what we have is two lots. To clean this up, typically with a, a zone change, we would be looking to, to merge two lots, especially since they're owned by the same property owner as a house cleaning And so that's kind of what we've started talking to the applicant about, moving forward. So like I said before, through a concept review, it gives both the, the community, the Planning Commission, as well as staff, an opportunity to kind of dive into the proposal itself, kind of unpack some things, and kind of have kind of a thought-provoking discussion. So at this point, I'm done, I'm done with my presentation and discussion. Staff's really recommending for the, for the Commission to ask questions, clarifying questions.
Yep.
Allow for the opportunity for the community to speak, as well as the, as the applicant here, and then, and go from there. I want to preface this again, there is no decision being made tonight, it is a thought-provoking discussion.
Yeah, just a chance to, for the community to understand what this is all about.
Exactly.
Awesome, okay, perfect, so with that, we'll, we'll open it up for questions, do you guys have questions for staff? Anyone?
Not at this time.
Nope.
I've got a couple, one is, is there any requirement with this building because of its uses in the past, to go through the historic preservation process on its way to approval?
Is there a direct required? Hold on, I want to preface this with, is, is there something in our code currently that says that it absolutely has to go to the Historic Preservation Commission? The answer is no. Is there a possibility that it might have to have something done from a Historic Resources Report standpoint? Maybe. Again, we're on the surface here, haven't dug down to the, to the depths to make that final determination, so it's a maybe at this point, not an absolute, oh, this is a landmark or it's within a historic district, and absolutely we're going to have to go through this process. None of the, neither one of those exist. Is it along the edge of a historic district? Yes. Does our code absolutely require it to go forward as a, as a historic resource that then requires HPC comment, consideration, recommendation? No. Not the way which, in which our code is written currently.
Robert?
Thanks, my question really is about the, the joining of the two parcels. Yeah, absolutely, how about this? My question's about the joining of the two parcels, when we talk about the two parcels, we're not talking about the Arobar Hotel and then the World, the site of the World University, we're actually talking about the two different properties that are here, that is the Old World University, and then this kind of back area on the southwest.
Correct, so, really the line is drawn roughly right here, so it starts at the south, goes directly north, and then ends right around here. So I don't have the line here unfortunately, but it's, it's about a quarter acre, and then a third, a little over a third of an acre, to get to that point, .61 acres.
Thank you, and my next question is, in 2006, there was a variance granted to reduce the amount of parking for the property, do we have the historic context of why the variance was granted, and how that might apply to a completely different use of this space?
Yeah, the, the end, so, the way in which use grantings function, like in, in terms of a variance or a conditional use permit, there is a 180-day cooling period, so if the use itself no longer exists, or no longer is on that site, it reverts back to existing conditions. And so the variance itself, I haven't done the full research for the variance itself, but even that variance itself for reduced parking wouldn't apply anymore.
Thanks, and then, is it the eight parking spots then, that is the total parking allotted for this space, or is it more or less?
Well, the, the interesting thing is, is StanTech did a study that included the spa use completely housed within the Hotel Arobar site, so, expanding it into a new location, they actually had a separate traffic study, traffic, traffic impact analysis done by ATE, which is a part of this report and part of the staff report, and in there, it identifies that because that study was done, any of the parking that you're seeing here is really surplus, not looking, aside from removing the parking, which is a little bit odd and outdated within that courtyard area, the angled parking is going to remain, so you're looking at eight spaces there, and then the two parking spaces along that, that northwest side will remain, so it's roughly 10 spaces in total, one of which is ADA accessible.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, cool. Can you elaborate on your alternate suggestion that you have in here?
Elaborate?
Yeah, just kind of give us a little bit more information on that, yeah, I'm trying to understand how that would work.
Yeah, it's a planning tool, for sure, right, within the toolbox, so, this is similar to what other cities do as well, here's the difference, other cities typically have it wholly identified and addressed at staff level, what we have here is a completely public process whereby if we identify a use of similar characteristics, such as a community center being of similar, not exact, similar, and then we're starting, starting to, to draw back the curtain to say-
To the PL, similar to the PL.
Correct, correct, and then, so, it wouldn't necessarily have a zone change general plan amendment, instead, you'd say PL is still the appropriate zoning and land use designation, however, the use, while not expressly identified within the code, through the CUP process, we end up identifying specific findings for the use in terms of its similarity, and then findings regarding the conditional use permit and its appropriateness.
Okay.
So it's a kind of a two-step process.
Right.
And that would be teased out certainly within the staff report and through a presentation, if they choose to go in that, in that direction as well.
And is there a primary reason on why they're suggesting the VMU?
Well, I'll let them speak to the VMU, the VMU, just to be fair, the VMU versus the PL provides much more flexibility, in terms of the uses, in terms of how, how it's processed, there's pros and cons to the VMU, the VMU literally has every, just about every single use is going to require likely a design review permit.
Right.
But here's the thing, the design review permit doesn't necessarily mean that it's coming before this body.
Right.
There is also the, the director's exemption route, which is staff level.
Right, okay.
So it's a, it's a, one or the other, but, one of the disadvantages to the VMU is it does have a review authority regarding most, if not all, different use types.
Right, and this would be covered, the, obviously a spa use would be covered under the VMU?
Yes, through the CUP process, the spa or health facility-
Would be covered.
Is covered, but requires a conditional use permit, so we'd still be looking at those findings.
Okay, and then with the, with the, the two lots that would be merging into one, are they both in PL, they're both in the same zone, they're both the same land use?
Yep.
Okay. And, and they're both operating that way now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right.
Well, when we say operating, vacant, one is vacant, the other is operating as a care facility, so it still meets, it's still within the PL land use designation and is still a lot, an allowed use.
Right, okay, cool, and the other surrounding land uses and zones, I, I know C1 is there, obviously we have the, the museum, and that's PL, I'm assuming?
Yes, the museum is PL, so everything to the west and to the southwest is PL, the use to the east is C1, the use to the north is V, is VMU.
Okay.
And the nor, and, and so it's to the north and to the northwest is VMU.
And has it always been PL, historically?
So I found some maps dating back to the late 90s.
Yeah.
Before we went through the general plan changes, which included the land use element changes as well, and they were PL, so it's been PL for, for quite some time.
Yeah, and if I recall, was it, was it at one point City Hall?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
But City Hall has bounced around, like a, like a pinball, so.
Okay, um, all right, so let's see, what else, what else? Oh, I do know that the last consideration of this property, did we discuss that, the, or can we discuss that?
We certainly can.
Okay, was that, that was approved by City Council, correct? Or was that a-
Um, you're talking about the development agreement?
Yes.
Was approved by City Council, however, it was then, there was a referendum that basically put it on a ballot, so, it was never really officially approved.
Got it, okay.
And then what ended up happening is the applicants ended up withdrawing the application altogether, yes.
Okay, and that was for affordable housing to go there, correct?
Correct, it was 10 units in total, including the unit on the north, so it was basically, within that roughly 10,000 square foot building, nine units.
Nine units, okay, and how many, well, nine units, so-
They were all efficiency units.
Efficiency units, okay, I mean, what does that mean, efficiency units?
The bedroom was also the living, which was also the kitchen.
Oh, studio, got it.
Yeah, efficiency, studio, potato, patato.
Right, so maximum probably like, you know, maybe, I don't know, 20 people roughly in there? People to a, a studio?
Maybe, yeah, if you have two people in each of those, yeah.
I'm just thinking of, you know, what type of impact it would have to that area, you know, for an affordable housing concept, which was approved by Council.
Hold on, well, not officially approved, it may have been approved, but wasn't official because, yes, because it was put on ballot.
Got it.
So it never really actually received the official approval to say, yes, this has been stamped, it can move forward.
On this point, this body reviewed the use and passed it on to the City Council, is that correct?
That's correct, as, as a development agreement is required, it's a rec, you're acting as a recommendation body for that development agreement when it moves forward, yes.
And I guess I've got a question that maybe can be answered by the applicant, but it was my impression that the interior has been changed and adapted numerous times over the years, I don't know what the outside has looked like, but right now it's a, a concrete block building with a flat roof, it's a pretty undistinguished building in terms of its, its look, was it, was it always thus, was, and I also noted that the fenestration in there now is clearly something new, do we have history on that?
I'll have them speak to the interior, in terms of whether walls are going to be reworked, the exterior, aside, before 2018, I'm not sure what it looked like previous to 2018, when those renovations took place, I'm not sure if there's a pitched roof or exactly what was going on there, but it definitely has more of a modern feel to the, to the exterior by today's standards.
Lucas, does, does the PL zoning allow for residential, residential buildings?
Single and multifamily, no, but caretakers' facility, yes.
Oh.
Okay, all right.
Which is the reason why they were going for a zone change through the DA, Development Agreement, at that time.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? I, I'd like to have the applicant speak first, if that's okay, and then, just because they might have answers to questions-
Did you want to ask Chair Quillacy?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Quillacy, how could we forget? Mr. Quillacy, do you have some questions?
Let me take off.
Replaced by the map. Thank you, Sherri.
Stop sharing my screen, hold on.
Oh, we have one more, I apologize, thank you, Jeremy, I apologize, that's my fault.
Hold tight, hold tight, Jeremy.
Just, just one note, in the staff report, it referred to a prior life as an office building, and that was another proposal that was considered, I think, by the Planning Commission, but never recommended through, and so, there really was never an office building use of this property.
That's a, that's a fair point, it was staged for it, but never officially occupied.
Okay, because it was an online company, correct?
As World University, yes, but they, they did a bunch of interior renovations and some exterior renovations, just never ended up occupying it as an office, their intentions were there, but, you're right, it got to the nine-yard line, but never actually passed the threshold for the 10-yard line for a first down, so.
Okay. Any other questions, Steve?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, okay, Jeremy, you can come on up now.
Good evening, hear me okay?
Yep.
My name is Jeremy McBride, I am over-caffeinated and I have a lot of enthusiasm, so, please tell me if- Hear me okay?
Yep.
My name is Jeremy McBride. I am over caffeinated and I have a lot of enthusiasm, so please tell me if it's too much. I am one of many people here tonight, some virtually with us, some here with us in the room tonight. Part of our ownership group of the hotel, Eric Good, Warner Ebbink, Ramin Shamsuri, stand behind me in this submission and discussion tonight. I also have some excellent consultants that have been weighing in on the project to date. Ginger Anderson on the land use side and general consultant for us is on Zoom. I would love to invite her to speak and answer some questions you guys have. Also Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers. Scott evaluated this property for the last, I don't know, several months, and that report that you see in the plan is provided by Scott. So he's also on Zoom tonight, if you have any trip questions, traffic or parking questions. Also here tonight, and for the record, just to clear role, is Kathy Cluff. Kathy, as you know, was, her and her family owned the Oaks, the prior operating hotel to us, the Al Roblar, for 40 years. That property had a very special connection to the spa and wellness community. Kathy ran the property for a long time. We, you know, were so lucky to have had Kathy lend her support to consult for the property. So she's a consultant, she's not going to be running the Spa and Wellness Center, that was a drafting error in our side. But she is there to help us really understand, you know, what works in this market, how to, how to lend services to the community, but also guide us along the way to make good choices sensibly for the town. Also Sheila Cluff, her mother, you know, has had a long history in the fitness and wellness community. We're hopeful, as we have done such a good job in the restoration of the hotel, to really incorporate some of the ethos and philosophies of Sheila in programming and also some of the services that we offer and share some of that Ojai history. We are lucky to have her, she's also here tonight if there's any questions that relate to some of that history and the scope. At the highest level of this property for us, and I'll keep it brief because I have some remarks, but a lot of work went into the submission packet, so if people have questions, I really want to get into that. But at the highest level, you know, we've been working on the hotel for five years. It's been a labor of love, you guys can see it every day. It's been quite an extraordinary experience for us and an opportunity to really give back to the town in a way that I think is going to be remarkable. We're rounding the finishing stages, I don't have an official open date, but we're near the end. Many of you saw it today or the last couple of weeks, and we're, we're, we're really, really excited to open that, open the doors up to the town. Part of our ambition in the project, we thought we would have kind of enough services for what the guests' needs are. When we started the development process and what led to finding and consulting with Kathy was a entire market of people, we get probably one to two emails every other day from guests wondering when we're going to open, can I sell your product, my product to you, can we have some of your things in our hotel that are so local to community? And most importantly, will you have a spa? And will it have services that I used to experience the Oaks? So there's 40 years of operating history here in town for what was known as a Spa and Wellness Center, and we really did a bad job of programming our existing site to accommodate that need. We have some, you know, some area designated in our plan for the hotel, but the campus, as you guys know, is incredibly tight. And, and this isn't necessarily a spillover, but something that's ancillary to our primary use of the hotel. At the highest level for me, this site represents a contributing TOT property, as well as a property that's not going to have impact to the things that concern the community, traffic, additional parking, things that we always hear about as we work on the hotel. So for me, this is a really great contributing asset to the community. As part of the business plan, the spa will attract a subset of people that will come to our hotel that we didn't consider before, and that's going to add to room revenue, and that's going to add to TOT tax, stuff that we hadn't projected and planned out for the city. So I think that's an incredible advantage of this project, a project that can be contributing, but also not be impacting the, the wellbeing of the town. This property has had, as we've learned tonight through the project description and history, a, you know, varied use, and, and what's really attractive to us about the site is the layout. We love the layout. Pretty low-rise building, it's, it's been, you know, really deferred for a while, it's relatively blighted, it hasn't been operating for seven years. And we just saw it as an opportunity to bring life to it. We always looked at that project, and, and if there's one that we really wanted to do in addition to the already ambitious hotel project, this was one, and, and figure out an ancillary use. We, we really learned the history, World University of America, which operated there remotely for a while, and the, in the many, many services, I learned just for the first time that someone was baptized there in the 60s, which is incredible to me, I think, who might be here tonight. But, but, but it's, 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 it has, it's had a long history, but it, 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 it hasn't really had an identity. And we're looking forward to bringing an identity to the project, as you see kind of through some conceptual planning in our program. We're really interested in VMU, particularly because, you know, conditional on, on the use, we want to have flexibility. We have a plan right now that suggests that we want a Spa and Wellness Center to serve a community of people that will stay with us and, 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 and spend money. And the spa, by the way, is a business, is a standalone business, is not a great investment, not a great plan. But because it's an ancillary use, it kind of makes sense for us. We also want to have flexibility if we want to change it later. We have administrative offices kind of scoped in there now. We have eight treatment rooms, maybe we want to grow, maybe we want to shrink it, maybe we want to add more housing. As mentioned by staff, we have one caretaker house that's, you know, placed on a lot in a very inconvenient location to the flow of the property. So we're looking at ways to, to create some separation and kind of reallocate space to that dwelling that can be used for staff housing. I've heard a lot about, in the very short time of prepping for this meeting, employees, and employees are really considered in our general plan for the hotel, and that's what makes this really attractive to us. A lot of our administrative back office, housekeeping and maintenance teams will already be working at the hotel and contributing from the hotel. Spa technicians, we're looking to hire local, that's what we have Kathy here for, to help navigate a lot of those ways in which we can engage the already independent community that's providing spa and services in the local area. I learned that 80% of the people who live in Ojai commute out to work, and 80% of the people who work in Ojai commute in. And it's a remarkable stat when you think about it, and we lot, we talk about parking, and there's a lot of solutions to that, but our solution, and being proactive about it, is find the best way to hire local, find services and people that are already here and contributing to the needs that we have. One of the, you know, just recently, and I mentioned this to a couple of you, we, one of the hardest positions to find in a, in a hotel is housekeeping, especially in a rural market. And we found this incredible person who's been in the community for 30 years, commutes out every day, 45 minutes, works incredibly long hours, has a family here. She spent, without disclosing much, spent a long time working in the town, but, but really an incredibly talented person that we're looking forward to hire this, this, this winter. So that's an example of someone that were taking a commute out, can walk to work and contribute at a high level to our, to our project. And we want to do more of those examples, and we've seen that so far with a lot of the initial recruiting that we've seen for the hotel, but also expect the same for the spa. It's going to be a pretty labor-light operating model, and really try our best to, to meet the needs and be solution-oriented around the concerns of the community, including noise, traffic and parking. Let's see, what else? I just, we're really excited about this. I can't tell you enough how excited we are to be part of, part of not only this decision, but, but also shape some of the concerns that, that people have and modify it. We want to beautify this building, it's, it's, it's really hard to look at every day, we see it every day in the condition that it's in, we want to bring some life to it that can be for our guests, but also for the community. The design of the use is not preferred, by the way. We would love it to be open to the public 24, you know, whatever the normal business hours are any day of the week. But we are conditioned by, you know, parking capacity, and we want to stay true to that. And our projection and the way we're going to deal with it is the majority of our use is going to be from existing hotel guests, roughly 70% of that use. And Scott's, Scott can talk more about the calculations for that, but we are going to manage it really well and manage it the same way in which we talked about managing the hotel uses that we're, we have a CUP for. That's all I have right now for you today. I'm, I'm available to answer questions, I have the team here to answer some questions and the consultants on the phone. But thank you for the time and look forward to discussing more.
Awesome. Jeremy, if you don't mind holding on, did any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Mr. Quillisi, nothing? No? No, okay, okay. I, I did have a couple of questions, you, you answered most of them, but, you know, I think, you know, one of the big concerns that we always have is traffic, obviously. You have the traffic study here. And I know that, you know, Ojai Avenue is kind of the main thoroughfare that goes through our town. So do you anticipate any like alternative kind of routes that could go to the spa potentially? Or would people still, you know, access the spa slash hotel through Ojai Avenue?
Good question, something we think a lot about, we experience ourselves arriving on a Friday afternoon sometime, it's a bottleneck in the center of town. Also the theater, you know, think about the theater opening, having programming on a Friday night, what is that going to be? So we're very proactive about thinking about what to do. What's really interesting about the way people get here, there's a couple of ways. We also learned ways of, of configuring our mapping that people would be using on Google or Waze or whatever traffic software you use to identify the hotel by updating our listing, to design a route of traffic based on times of pattern of day. So you can do that with Google as a business owner, and you can do that with Waze. And both of those feed into a lot of the in-car services that people have, even if it's not a Google or Waze interface. So one way of doing that for us would design it based on peak of travel, but we also think that a, a really good flow in general for, for the hotel even is using Rincon. You know, turn left on Rincon, take Matilha over, turn right on Signal, turn right into the hotel and park. That's a really easy route. It's not the best arrival experience, to be very honest with you, but when there's a situation, when there's peak traffic coming into town, that's a really great way to shortcut some of the noise of what, what's been happening in the center of town. So that's one way. The, the primary travel, again, for us is a guest. A guest is going to come to the hotel and use the spa. The, the guest is already going to be parked through many locations that we have established, either onsite, behind the hotel, or at an offsite parking lot. So we don't see a really, a capacity increase necessarily, I know that's not the question, but the primary route of travel could be altered, is a short answer, and I think we're going to experiment. And we're going to work with local business owners, we've had discussions already with people. I look forward to having discussions and understanding what the theater programming's going to be, to really build around that, and try to help augment their needs as well. So hopefully that answers the question.
That was great, I appreciate that.
Can I do a follow-up to that?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
Kind of off the cuff, but you had talked about, like, like, alternative routes and kind of looking at that. How are you looking to get that to your guests, guests that are being, that are going to be arriving? Is that through email, ver, I-
Yeah, it's a good, a good question, there's, there's a couple of ways. One is being proactive about communication of how to get, how to, how to arrive. It'll be interesting to see the mix, people rent cars, do they drive themselves, is it regional, is it rideshare? Some interesting ways, you know, you see, you see it in urban markets, but there might be rideshare locations that people pick up and drop off, if that happens to be even a need. So we can designate a rideshare pickup-drop-off location that's not necessarily directly at the hotel. So that's like one idea as an example, to reroute rideshare traffic.
Mm-hmm.
That's on Uber or Lyft or anything like that. The, the easiest way, which anyone that has a local business can even do, is you can instruct Google the, the road in which arrives to your main entrance to the hotel, so we can design the route of travel for a guest to arrive to the hotel. So there might be an overriding what's faster, but theoretically, i- if it's Google that's managing traffic data, they're going to reroute you anyway because there'll be a bottleneck of traffic getting to the hotel. So the idea would be, we would, we would redesign the route of travel in Google, Google would feed that into Maps, and Google owns Waze too now, so it would also go into that area, and really see how it's working. But I think that signal approach is really, you know, turning right on Signal's really good opposed to turning left on Ojai Avenue. And the Rincon route, I think, is a really clean one. Otherwise, it's, you're, you creep too far. I mean, we still love that arrival, for a lot of people, that, that arrival experience, I know having it is pretty special.
Yeah.
So we don't-
But getting stuck trying to turn left is-
Oh, it's a nightmare, it's a bad guest experience. So we, we are, we're going to learn, but that's the easiest way. So through, through pre-arrival communications, you know, a lot of that also is involved, you know, you get, you book a room, you're about to leave for your trip, let's say you're in, you know, Santa Barbara or something, you're coming for the weekend.
And you plug it into Google Maps?
Plug it into Google Maps. But in addition to that, you're going to have some pre-arrival communication. Hey, there's a lot of traffic coming in on your arrival time, make sure you, you follow this way of travel, you know, punch in this address and it'll, it'll take you with it. We'll try our best to over-communicate that. Most people arriving to the hotel, as you guys appreciate, you're not going to know how to get there. So the maps are going to be the easiest way to do that and redesign it, and I'm excited to share what happened. I'd love to see how that actually works in practice. And, and hopefully, we don't have, if, if we can kind of tinker with a lot of our arrival departure patterns, incentivize guests to leave early, you know, come early, you know, everyone would love to get their room before 12 o'clock, you know? I know a lot of people that travel that do. So can we think about that and say, hey, you know, come early, you know, adjust our, our check-in times to, to work around the peak traffic demands that are, are not necessarily peak, but just the bottleneck because of tourism?
Right.
To reduce the inbound traffic in that main drag? That's, that's some of the things we're going to be doing. And we've got some great tools to help, help with that, you know, we talked about that a long time ago, and I don't want to go back into the hotel world, but, you know, we're going to learn a lot about, we're going to have a lot of data on ins and outs of our guests because of just the, the, what we have to use to track cars.
Right.
So that's going to be really cool to share with you guys when we learn.
And, and I don't know if it was addressed in here, but you mentioned 70% of the, you know, the folks that are using the spa are going to be hotel guests. So how many people are you anticipating that be, to be, like a number, roughly?
Oh, it, it's hard to say, you know, and, and I, I mean, I don't know, I put you on the spot, Kathy. I've just heard, you know, 40 years of operating history, and, and they have, you know, that was why people were coming in the first place, so it's a little-
Sure.
-inflated, but, you know, in our experience of, of, of being involved in a lot of different types of hospitality projects that have spa services, it's, it's a 30% usually of, of a guest will use something. What we hope this can become, in, in having some varied programming in there, will attract people to come, we'll have a, hopefully a really cute local boutique that we can have some of the community offerings in there, a place for them, you know, it's been hard to, to navigate a lot of, everyone has individual products that they want to sell at the hotel, it's hard to navigate that because of the frequency of our use. So maybe there's a way in which we can kind of have that in, into the, the local shop as well as books and apparel that we sell, that can be a really great way to feature some of our local merchants and, and through that, attract the guests to come use, you know, the services at the, at the building.
So 30% of the 50 folks that are staying at the hotel will use the spa?
Yeah.
Anticipate?
Yeah, about, I'd say that, that's kind of how we would hope it would work, otherwise no more spa. So I think we've miscalculated our assumptions around having to spa. But we think, it's, it, the perception of Ojai is that it's a wellness place, yeah, I mean, honestly, we're, I mean, there's, it's a, the wellness is nature outside of the hotel.
Right.
And that's what we want to continue to promote. We want to have services for people to unwind and relax, but we really want to get people out of the hotel on their feet, on a bike, going into a trail, and that's really what this property's about. The spa is just a little bit of a ancillary offering for a demand of people that really want it. I can't, I can't emphasize enough how excited we are to kind of engage that pocket of, of community that is, is really wanting this. And hopefully, in the public comments, which I haven't said, I haven't, haven't read yet, also amplify that. I, I hope there's a lot of enthusiasm for hopefully services that are- I hope there's a lot of enthusiasm for hopefully services that are democratic, that everyone can benefit from and have access to a building and a property that is in need of a new life.
And one of the concerns that I have that, I think we talked about it, but if you've got most of your folks coming from the spa, crossing the street, I'm sorry, from the hotel, crossing the street, going to the spa, have you talked with Lucas about the potential of like some sort of crosswalk or something there? Because obviously, you're just going to have people, you know, flying over the street and the car is turning, it's going to be kind of a mess.
Well, what I had in the plan was to just close the road originally, just take over the road, but that's not realistic. That'd be great. We want to have a, we need to have a crosswalk there. It's, for many of you, Commissioner Graham, I haven't taken you through the property yet, but for those that I had the ability to walk through, the flow we want is to kind of navigate through an area of the hotel that's going to get people out of the properties. A couple of ways, but one preferred way, especially if you want to grab a bike, is to go on to Ventura. And there needs to be some sort of safe means of transport there. You have the one going across Ojai Avenue, which is effective. But, you know, we're really aware and concerned about what we're hearing about the bike incidents in town. We're in a really dangerous corner there, offering bike services in an already, you know, concerned area that people are getting injured and we want to, we don't want to contribute to that and we want to hopefully be solution-oriented for that because we want to encourage people to bike. So how we do that is going to be really important, how we educate people. But I do think we need some sort of, and we're willing to help think of ways to do that. I don't know what they are right now, but we need a safe passage across, otherwise you're going to do what we all did when I did it with you guys, just kind of look both ways and kind of said hurry up and kind of run across the street. And that's kind of not a great experience.
Yeah.
So we want it to be kind of a logical way, fine, to the spa.
Okay, good. All right.
I'd love to ask a few questions.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, Jeremy, great to meet you.
Hi.
So I see in, you know, this report, I think it was done by Associated Transportation Engineers, talking about the project trip generation, daily trips, it's about eighty-seven, you know, thirty percent of that's going to be local, so twenty-four people, give or take, right? That's not right. Yeah, that's about right. Maybe a little bit more than twenty-four are going to be local. And I guess my question comes back to parking, just given like how busy the area is, limited on-street parking, limited public parking spaces. Where will employees park and where will like the local guests park, assuming the El Roblar guests that are attending are parking and like El Roblar parking?
Yeah, sure. I'll give a little bit of a partial answer and I'll let Scott, who prepped a lot of the calculations, comment. You know, the beauty of this kind of hybrid of use is it's private for the peak, so the eight spots are two employees. And when there's off-peak, when there's not a lot of demand from the hotel guests and we open it to the community, there'll be adequate parking based on our calculations. The mix between available spots for public and guests who are already arrived at the hotel and parked at the hotel. So we're not really adding any more traffic demand, it's just kind of accommodating use for community that hasn't been considered, but during a period of time where there's no stress on traffic and parking considerations. I think, you know, not to rehash what we had done for the hotel, but we added a lot of parking through a lot of our replant, rehabilitation of the site. And, you know, we're not lost on that, but we don't want to add more capacity for people to come. That's not the design of this. In a perfect world, this is just an ancillary use for the hotel and it's only for the hotel. We really need this to be open to the community. It's really what has to happen. And the only way to do that is to kind of accommodate in such a way that's not going to impact the already stressed-out needs that people have around parking and traffic. So Scott, did you want to weigh in? If you can unmute him. Sherry?
Hi, this is Scott Schell with Associated Transportation Engineers. I think Jeremy kind of hit the nail on the head there.
Yeah, you're pretty soft, Scott.
How's that? A little better?
A little better. Sherry, I don't know if you can turn him up at all?
Yeah, I'm steering right into this thing.
Yep.
I think it's on our side, Scott.
Hi, Sherry. So Stantec did a parking demand analysis for the hotel when it was first approved and it looked at, you know, weekday occupancy and demands for parking and looked at weekend. It basically said with the parking supply that was going to be provided, which is eighty-eight spaces, that's onsite and offsite, if you remember, there's some offsite locations, that they would have excess parking. So we looked at the calculations, kind of agreed with them. It went based on the I T E or Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, how much parking you need for hotels that have facilities such as pools, fitness centers, spas. And the Stantec report showed that there was excess parking for both the weekday and weekend. So I think Jeremy's design is during the week and when it's busy, we kind of reserve the spa for guests at the hotel. The weekday, when it's not as busy at the hotel, we have some extra spaces for the public.
I'm sorry, how many spaces for the public?
The Stantec report said there was going to be thirty-six extra spaces during the weekday, plus the eight that are to be provided onsite.
Thirty-six onsite between the hotel and the spa?
Thirty-six for the hotel onsite and offsite because they've secured offsite parking and there'll be another eight spaces on the spa site itself.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, Scott, when I read the Stantec report, it's talking about applicant proposes to provide seventy-three parking spaces for all-day use. Proposed parking supply would be twenty-five spaces less than the parking requirement. This is my first meeting, this is not coming at you at all, just asking for clarity so that I can better understand how the El Roblar and this, you know, spa will interact throughout the week, whether it's peak, off-peak, as well as when there are special events.
The Stantec report I have is March twenty-four, twenty-two, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, page three, underneath table one. It talks about the, table one is the parking requirement, ninety-eight spaces.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so that's the code requirements. So that's what your zoning ordinance would say you would need. So on page, oh, let's see if page one, so on page four of six, it goes through the parking demand analysis. And in table two, it shows the parking demand anticipated for the new El Roblar. It's fifty-two spaces required during the weekday with eighty-eight spaces required. And on Saturday, it's seventy-eight spaces needed and eighty-eight spaces required. So both of those had a surplus of spaces.
Sure. Oh, 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 you're looking at page, are you looking at attachment C, page fourteen?
Correct.
Okay.
And I see what Scott's saying about the parking demand. I'm talking about the code and what it requires, especially given, you know, everything that is being built around this space. There's the restaurant as well at the El Roblar and, you know, just the event space when you have a hundred and fifty people attending, where are they going to park and things like that? Again, this is not an attack.
Sure.
This is a genuine question, is my first time.
Hey, Scott, I'll add some history for a little bit. Maybe this can give a little bit of context. When we acquired the hotel, it was historically underparked, didn't have enough spaces to operate as a hotel. Thirty-two, thirty-five, I don't remember right now, it's been a long time. But it's a significant amount of parking spaces that didn't exist to support the existing use, which was a hotel. So we inherited that problem. There was a code method based on the program of our hotel and then there was a, you know, more logical engineering method around trips and traffic, along with capacity available. And we had to consider that with all the uses that we wanted to offer for the hotel. Now, in our hotel, we have fifty rooms, there's a calculation for that, as you see in the report. There's a restaurant onsite, the restaurant's open to public, which is also a consideration for determining a parking calc. We have an event space. That event space is for hotel guests, but allows for outside guests to attend. A very small number of outside guests, but the primary use is going to be hotel-registered guests that can book and use the hotel event space, with the exception of nonprofit events that we want to do for the town. Have a Rotary event once a month, do things that are off-peak, that don't distress the community, but get the community in. There were real limitations with the hotel that we accommodated and overcame incredible obstacles to meet a need that really wasn't even possible, I mean frankly. We bought a parking lot, we added eighteen spots, we subleased additional parking offsite for employees. We went to extraordinary lengths to accommodate what we needed for our property to not further stress out the already exhausted capacity that existed in town. So we did all of that. And what Scott's report is talking about, without getting into the weeds, because I don't, I do want to let him speak to the math on it, but we're saying also now that the person that's already there is staying there and there's no distinguishing factor between guests and hotel and the methodology that they're using is, that same person's also going to use the spa that's already there. And under that thinking, there's not really going to be an additional consideration for a need of parking because the trip's already done, the parking spot's already accounted for, and theoretically, it's already accounting for a time of use that is most under-stress, which is peak travel. Now, the community thing is hard because we're designing this in a very restrictive way that says, okay, if our calculations are right and our assumptions are right, around seventy percent of guests using the spa, and we do want to open it up to the community during off-peak times, how do we do that? How do we really restrict that? How do we not make a larger problem around servicing the community needs and in exchange really hurt the capacity that we have needs for already at the hotel? So that's what we're going to work through and a lot of that's easier to restrict through inventory. And just like inventory for a hotel, we can control inventory for guests and we can hold inventory for community and only offer a certain amount of spots. And that's our best way to manage it in the beginning. We're incredibly conscious of it, we just think that the long road of the needs of the hotel have been, hopefully, that's a little bit of context and there's a lot more into the thinking that went into those calculations, but we're going to work really hard around communicating to the city through reviews around what the needs of the parking requirements are for the hotel and spa. And we have conditions for that, already accounted for.
To add on to that, apologies, we didn't dive into and drill down the parking piece because we spent six meetings with this body during the hotel to figure out and drill down the parking.
We hammered that down.
So I will, look, if this project moves forward, I anticipated it well, we'll drill down that parking to give the historical context. It just was left out here.
Sure.
We were more focused on the use.
Right.
And the potential change and some alternatives and some of that surface piece, some of those surface pieces. Certainly, we can, we can provide that clarity regarding the parking because Stantec did an excellent job of clarifying and verifying and then clarifying and verifying and then clarifying and verifying its parking demand and the analysis, the trips and everything that went along with that. Because the hotel really was underparked because of the fact that the use itself had been vacant for so long, it reverted back to the original requirements in terms of parking, which were exceptionally higher than what was being parked onsite at the time.
Vice Chair Trent, Ginger Anderson, one of the applicant team, the team for the applicant would like to speak.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ginger Anderson with Brownstein, working with Jeremy and Scott. And I think Scott is, Scott is a technical expert, as was Stantec in their report, and so that's working, it's for bringing that same conversation forward between the two reports. But I think what was really helpful for me in understanding Scott is, and his kind of some technical speak sometimes, is understanding how those counts are done. So parking is, of course, a big issue with any kind of land use, especially in a downtown like this. And the way that the parking manual creates these parking demand numbers is they go and they go to places that are like this and they sit there and they count cars. And they have categories of hotels and so they would go to a hotel that has a spa and a fitness facility and a pool and a certain number of rooms and they would count cars. And they don't stop those people when they come into the hotel to say, this car, is this car full of an employee or a guest? So to your question about employees versus guests, it's all mixed together when you're talking about the parking demand. And so then, at the same time, what I would say is that the manual, the code, the number, the part of the code that they used in creating the parking demand assumed that this hotel would have spa. And when they assume it's going to have a spa and these other uses, it does not then do the math based on the square footage of a spa or the square footage of a restaurant, it actually goes by the number of rooms of the hotel. Because regardless of how big your restaurant is, you only have a certain number of rooms that those people can be in. And so what I want to kind of impart is that, don't call it a comeback, they were always here, right? So these, this use was always assumed, it was always involved in the parking calculation. And in fact, by having this downtown urban core use turn into part of the hotel, you're actually, you should, I would say there's an argument that this is a net benefit of eight spaces to the hotel in terms of this project. And so that's, that was how it kind of helped me understand it. But I also wanted to, if I could, kind of bleed into some of those other questions about the V M U zone versus the P L zone. And the P L zone and Lucas, I know we were both at the same planning conference last weekend, P L is kind of a, I would say it's sort of an archaic zoning type. There isn't a lot of new public zoning being made. It's sort of in the seventies, when we all created our general plans, they said, okay, where are your schools, where are your courts, things like that, let's put a P on them, they're public, great. I don't see a lot of fresh new P L being made, but what your general plan, and I know you're going through that general plan update process right now, is talking about V M U as a more flexible zoning. For instance, I looked at your P L zone, right now, there's only thirteen allowed uses in the P zone. And I would guess, potentially, the reason why the site has been underutilized for all this time is that that's not, there's just not a lot you can do in that zone. By comparison, the V M U zone has dozens of things that could potentially be, which speaks to the long-term flexibility of the site. And I did want to mention, you know, the housing element, your latest housing element did speak to this being ten units of residential. What you also get credit for in the arena is planning for residential. If you rezone this from P to V M U, I would argue your development potential for that housing element number could increase. And it also allows for different kinds of housing, where the P L zone only allows for a caretaker unit, meaning I have a use that needs somebody to live onsite to keep looking at it all the time, that the V M U zone would allow a lot more flexibility. And then just to close it out and not be too long-winded about it, you know, the downtown is where your constituents, where the general plan policies and goals are to focus your development in the downtown. And what that does as well is maximizes your efficiency on your utilities, your water, your sewer services. It also preserves those places on the outside of your town that maybe greenfield development would happen. Really concentrating and working on revitalizing the downtown is the sustainable way to move forward with your town planning, your urban development. So I biased, I think it's a great site for it. I'm also here for any more questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Gina, appreciate that. All right, any other questions?
Let's hear from the public.
Yeah, are we ready to open it up? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Jeremy.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. All right, let's, I won't go into any particular order, but I think we initially had Mr. Daddy up. Mr. Daddy?
I'm not sure how many of you actually pay attention to what our roads look like and our driveway approaches. I spent a dozen years on complete streets. We walked every single street, we measured every street, we know what the sidewalk was, we know how many driveway approaches. When you get into... When you get into the area of that downtown, you have no traffic through on one side from Signal over to Canyatta. We don't have any mid-block exits and entrances. We do on the south side, where we had Caro's, we've got the liquor store, we've got the market, okay? So we kind of have different confluences. Now, it was recommended twenty-five years ago that we go ahead and throw a sidewalk all the way across Ventura Street for a number of reasons. It's too congested, it's too dangerous, it's the center of town. The other thing we have is a very high offset from the street. So when you're coming in off Ojai Avenue onto Ventura Street, you're going to dip and bottom out, and it causes slowing, it causes sudden backup, it causes people to hit. It's dangerous, it's too fast. Extending that sidewalk, and again, this is a recommendation made twenty-five years ago, extending that sidewalk across there stops that shortcut to cut in to bypass part. Now, this was done years ago with one of our mayors that almost had a bicycle accident, so they decided to put extra, extra stop signs in for them, okay? I think, not many of you travel that street during the day or during the evening, I do usually three, four, five times a week. In thirty years, I've never had a problem parking going to the Blues in the Bull, or when we had the Playhouse operating, and when we had both operating, there have not been parking issues there on Aliso Street. Just not. There's plenty of parking all the time, day, weekends, even during farmer's market when it gets pushed back, there's plenty of parking. We've done three major studies and wasted tens of thousands of dollars over the last thirty years, and we've come up with a couple of hotspots in town for no more than a couple of hours. And so parking has been used as a control to stop development. That's really what it's been for, and that's the whole purpose. It's not an actual issue. We have plenty of parking, and if you go around to all the businesses, you'll see the owners park right in front of their store. And if there were a problem, they would want paying customers to park in front of their store. And so that's what happens. I think it's time for us to start doing some infill. Now, we took the convent in the worst way, because the person was a nice person, we followed none of our rules or protocols, and we allowed to change on that corner of Aliso and Canyatta. When we had Al Milner's Print Shop, that was changed. When we put in that great big giant two-story place up on Canyatta, which is a quasi-hotel by the barber shop, we have gone through and we have changed and allowed and put on conditional use permits and allowed variances everywhere in that downtown corridor since we rezoned. And that was where the new urbanists wanted us to come in and create a brand-new zone, which ninety-five, ninety-six ended ninety-seven, called VMU, and it hasn't been fixed since. So I would appreciate you extending this one, one more lot.
Thank you, Mr. Daddy. Brian Akins?
Hello, Brian Akins, current chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Happy to be here today. I sent, I gave yourselves two copies that you could share on this, and I gave a copy to Jeremy and also a copy to Lucas. The thing I want to point out to is if you go to the left side of this, you go up to Ventura Street, you're going to see this B zero five, and that is the property we're talking about. Now, what's important in here, and believe me, Jeremy Warner and Eric, good to see you, but they're aware that in 2017, Caltrans came into the Historic Preservation Commission as a part of the ATP project, said, we're going to do a historic survey of the curbs, gutters and sidewalks. And we said, fine, fine. They did a wonderful report, one hundred and forty-two-page report. The only problem was it went somewhere in the city and got put on a shelf, and we didn't find out anything about it for two years after we'd spent time. If you look at this map, you'll see kind of this turquoise color. That is the state historic district. So once that report was done by law, they had to give that to the historic people at the state. The historic people at the state looked at that and said, okay, Ojai, you're now a state historic district. And that's that turquoise that's around there. Hasn't been recognized or whatever they do for the city council, but as Lucas knows and as the three gentlemen behind me know, it made a difference. The other thing you see here, this is a draft of what we had for a project that we've been working on for several years, and that's for the Ojai Civic Center Historic District. You can see we have all of these different things, you can see the color code on that. What's important is that this property backs right up to the state historic district. So that's one part. The other part is that that property has been discussed is historic. When those two items collide, there may, again, going back to what Lucas said, there may be some word in that this needs to go to the Historic Preservation Commission for us to look at what is historic on that property and what adjustments are planning to be made. And that's the whole purpose of this meeting here tonight. And so we have looked at it, I went over there, did a site visit, didn't have a tour, looked at it, or in 2018, when they, a lot of changes were taking place, I was over there on a regular basis, often calling, sharing, asking what the heck's going on. So I have seen changes. So getting to our part now is the fact that it looks as though what we're seeing is that there would be very few changes, if any, that we're seeing so far to this project. The HPC does not care about the inside parts of the project, it's on the outside. The other thing is, there was a comment that, hey, why are you worrying about this being historic? There's only two historic locations on the state historic district. Well, that's only because they put them there, those are the museum and the Pratt House. Lots of other historic buildings.
Thank you, Brian.
So again, there are benefits that come with being historic, and that's being able to use the California State Historic Code.
Brian, before you go.
Thank you.
Could you tell me what exactly the yellow contributing means?
So in here, you see the gray, which is non-contributing, the yellow is contributing. So
What does that mean?
We looked at each of the properties, and we said, does this have a historic value on it? And we've talked about it, it was the courtroom, it was the police station, it was these different things over the time. Back in, when the fire came through, like it took down the museum, it also took down the church was there, they built another church there. This property was then sold in the nineteen-sixties to a gentleman, he raised that church and put in the parking lot. So that's removed, if that were still there, it would be more historic. So we looked at that and said, this property has contributing historic happenings that add to the historic nature of the downtown.
Okay, so you said that you were only really interested in the outside of the building, right? The HPC only cares about that. You care about color.
Do we care about color? We care about color when it's specified, like the code specifies the colors for the arcade. You're about to get a paint, new paint job on the arcade, that color is specified in the code.
Okay, now, as the hotel is a contributing facility, you don't have control or input into their color scheme, right? Or wrong?
I'll go over to
Yeah, I think we can probably table this later.
Do you want me to respond to it now, or do you want to hold off for the rest of the comments?
Yeah, I think we should get through public comment, and then we can open it up, discussion.
Okay, if we can come back to that.
Okay, so on El Roblar, so the one time it came to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the only thing on that, although I went to every meeting, was whether, what kind of design to do on the front of the building. And so we had a recommendation to the planning commission in that.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Brian. Mr. Miley, you are up. I know you just sat down, I apologize, I should have got you while you were walking.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I know this is a concept review. I've read over the administrative report, developer submissions. As a supportive addition to the El Roblar Hotel's functions, this is, in my opinion, a good proposed project. It's during the week, fifty percent emphasis on local spa booking is really worthy. I think this community service will add much to our town. I was and am strongly supportive of the El Roblar Hotel restoration several years ago, when it was started, and I'm still in. I did not read about employee parking, though. Where will they park? With eight new parking spots designated for the parcel, I assume most clients will walk from the hotel to the health spa. I would suggest the predominant crossing be Matelaha and North Ventura Streets because North Ventura and Ojai Avenue is an active, quick-turning intersection, get through before they come down, and would be very risky. I came here in nineteen sixty-eight and knew this property when it was our city hall and police department. I do not remember that this property has been designated as a property of merit, potentially leading to a historic designation. Regarding zoning, as I understand, a VMU designation with the COP will provide a permanent zoning approval, more so than a discretionary review leading to a COP. Making it legally a hundred percent zoning tight should, I suggest, be a VMU designation with COP. For the actual open spa site on the western edge, I would suggest they consider the installation of sound deadening materials to block road noise from Ojai Avenue. My values include folks having a sound environment, which does not get interrupted by sound noise from nearby on an ongoing basis, like pickleball.
Separate topic.
Especially because this is an outdoor spa service. Another suggestion is to consider adding one or more EV chargers in the parking area to help the city gain lower greenhouse gas levels. I like the plan, the community involvement, and the site plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
I will sit down.
Mr. Starkweather, you are up.
Good evening, former fellow commissioners and
Good to see you again.
First of all, I think, as is outlined on page four of their letter, I think there's amazing benefits to this. TOT, expanding existing businesses, bringing more customers in. Now, you spend a lot of time on parking and traffic. They are virtually irrelevant for your decision-making, because you cannot go back and analyze the hotel El Roblar. It's been approved. The only thing you're looking at as a planning commissioner under the code is what's been adding, being added. Since the hotel customers are already there, there's no traffic and there's no parking for them. The only parking we're talking about are daytime use by locals. Now, as Mr. Daddy said, and he drives that street regularly, I'd probably go down that three or four times a day, particularly Matelaha Street, right behind there. You find me a day in the week that you cannot find a spot on Matelaha right in front of that building, because I do it every day. And on North Blanch, what's right over there? A parking lot right behind the museum. Do you ever see anybody in that one block away? So parking is not a relevant issue here, nor is traffic, because we're talking about during the week, locals who would not be coming down Ojai Avenue most likely, they'd be coming down Matelaha Street, which I always use, I never go down Ojai Avenue. And in addition, this whole issue about, you know, going online to help people get here and so forth, you know, if we were concerned about that, why isn't the city doing something? Because most of our visitors on the weekend are for the day, because we have no hotels in right down Ojai. We well have one, but right now, we get all this traffic because they're coming for the day, because they can't afford to stay here in lots of cases. Do we have any kind of thing online for people, tourists, to tell them how to get where they're going? And it was pointed out previously when this came up, and this is pretty uniform, twenty percent of downtown traffic is people looking for places to park. Now, nobody brought up the ugly word of valet parking, but that, in fact, was how they were solving that problem, because the people, whether they come down Ojai Avenue and turn left onto their place, or they come down Matelaha Street and come on Signal and turn right, which is probably the easier way, they're going to park their car, and they won't be using it again. They don't need to look around for a place to park like you used to have to do. So neither one of those issues, I think, are relevant. As to historic, let me correct something in my letter. My family moved here in nineteen fifty-three, I was six years old, and this was our church. This was the Ojai Valley Baptist Church. Now, if we're talking about historic, there was a beautiful sanctuary there, which was destroyed when that moved. So the historic part is gone. And by the way, I made the mistake, I was baptized there, people may not believe that actually happened, but I was baptized there in nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty-nine, we moved there, because the church moved onto Grand Avenue. So I think this is a great project, we need it, our downtown needs it, and I hope you will give it a favorable concept review.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it. Awesome. All right, Barbara, you are up. Last but not least.
Okay, all the things that were interesting, I agree with Bob Daddy, I agree with Jeffrey, I go every single day downtown, every single day I drive around, I take Matelaha, too. There's never a parking problem, ever, 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 ever. In fact, you can even park in front of my store most days, particularly when we want to take the guests to the spa, like it's my hotel, right? When you want to take the guests to the spa, Monday through Thursday, you can park in front of my store any day you want. And I have Rory's next to me, and I have a little deli next to me. But I think the more interesting thing is the historic part. Whoa. Whoa. If that's historic, nothing should ever be historic. So unattractive. And it's been unattractive and eyesore, in my opinion, every time I drive by it, the same thought goes through my head, God, why doesn't somebody come in here and change the way this look? It's terrible. There may have been historic usage, but there's never a historic building there, seriously. And all you have to do is look at what they have done to date. If it isn't breathtaking, if that isn't their resume of what they can do with something, what is? We have the most spectacular-looking hotel being built, and these are the same people that are going to go and make that blight look beautiful. I mean, this should be absolutely, can you imagine what it looks like for downtown, anybody? Because I know, I haven't seen your plans, but I've never seen you do anything that I don't think is beautiful, and I'm extremely critical as a person, okay? Extremely, on everything, every detail of life. Extremely, on everything, every detail of life. So I think that this project should be just stamped with approval, put it through, don't beat them up. They were beaten up so badly over the most gorgeous hotel, which is going to help the downtown. This is just something that is going to be a breath of fresh air over on that street. I can't wait to be driving by and looking at it, because the visuals will be outstanding. Please do consider not beating them up over this, too, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. Open it up for discussion? Yeah? Do, Mr. Quilisi, you want to start the discussion? In TV land?
Thank you very much, John. I would be happy to. If I recall accurately what we've heard this evening, the traffic and parking studies were done for the El Roblar previously, and they assumed a spa and wellness center of some fashion being a part of the overall establishment. And that would help to set the parking requirements, and it would help to set the traffic levels that are anticipated.
Yep.
With the proponents here saying that we have peak traffic and peak usage, let's say, during the weekends, and off-peak during the week, I don't see a problem with either parking or traffic, VMT, vehicle miles traveled, whatever. And so, and having, like my fellow commissioners, having seen the facility, having been a permanent resident back here in the valley, or in the town, for more than 20 years, and off and on visitor and resident for more like 50 years, I have always hoped that someone would do something useful with this property. It was not attractive. I don't remember it as City Hall or the police station. I can tell you, I never considered it a very attractive or a very useful property when it was the World University. I mean, there's nobody there practically. And this proposed usage, I think, would not only be a great addition for patrons, guests of the hotel, but it's a way of involving the residents of the city in a wellness facility that will always be a good addition to whatever we have in the city. So I would favor going forward with this. Staff needs to do a little more digging. Its appearance, as we've heard, has changed over the years, and its usage has changed over the years, and I'm not sure that there's anything left that could be considered historic other than its physical location next to the museum and next to other things. But that's a decision that other people will have to make. But that aside, I would favor recommending that this go forward and that the Planning Commission consider it again when it comes forward for a design review.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Judy?
Happily, I was not on the Planning Commission during the hotel's long, difficult experience trying to get approved, especially with parking. I agree with Jeffrey. I don't think parking is really at issue here. And in the staff report, it said that there is a parking lot at 209-211 West Ojai Avenue designated for the employees with a capacity of 51 parking places. They're only needing 15 at the moment, so it seems to me that there's room to grow, should it become necessary. I agree with Mr. Daddy. It would be really nice to see a vacant building filled up and being useful to the hotel to ensure that those 50 rooms are filled all the time. That would be lovely. If the spa helps with that, great. I agree that it will be a benefit to local people. I was asking about the historic piece before, because as I understand it, the hotel is not part of, is not landmarked, and therefore, I believe that you do not control what happens with the color of it. Is that correct, Brian?
Hold on, I'll respond to that.
Okay.
If I could. So you're right, it is not landmarked. However, it is within the designated area as a historic, as a state-designated historic district.
Does that mean that they control the color?
Because of that, it controls the, what's the phrase that I'm going to use here? It controls the comment period for design. It controls color. It controls the historical sense. And really, what it boiled down to, when this project, when the Hotel El Roblar went forward, the focus was the facade. Everything else that was a part of the hotel had been changed to the point where it was unrecognizable.
Didn't matter.
The facade, however, held historic reverence, or there was still enough meat on the bone for that discussion to be brought forward. So it was brought forward to the Historic Preservation Commission. That is different than the site that we're looking at here as a concept review. I want to make sure that it's identified here, that when we're looking at this, this site is not within the state-designated historic--
Right.
--district. Is it butted up against it?
Yes.
Is it marked on this Ojai Historic Preservation Commission Downtown Historic District Study Draft?
Yes.
Is that an approved district?
No. Okay. So when I visited the site, Jeremy indicated to me, if I, I hope I'm accurate here, tell me if I'm not, that they would like to make the spa similar to the hotel, for example, in color. I think, and he mentioned a few other things, like wainscoting, maybe. Anyway, anything they do to that building that makes it look more like the hotel is probably a huge benefit. The landscaping plans sound lovely. I like the fact that they are removing hardscape and putting in some gardens. And I don't have an opinion about the VMU versus your alternate plans. I'm just going to await further, your further digging on that subject.
I think, in terms of what we're talking about there from that context, those are two options. We're laying out options, indifferent about either option, but those are options that have been identified through the code, so.
Um, yes, please.
Part of the submission, there was an exterior rendering of this proposed project, which has the facade kind of outlined, or at least conceited, to keep the same vocabulary as the hotel that was approved by HPC, which included a plaster look versus this kind of painted center block and a wainscot, a painted, hand-painted wainscot, which you can actually see at the hotel today. So they were going to keep the same look and feel that was approved through HPC, through the exterior process. That was a, you know, something we wanted to do, obviously also to help speed up the contemplation on the review of what it should be, but also to just kind of keep the language of the hotel and the spa building in the same way.
I like that.
It's helpful. Okay.
Okay. We'll close it back for the public and bring it back to discussion. Jeremy, did you have any?
My name's Robert.
Robert, I'm so sorry. So sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate Jeremy clarifying that there is, if there is a need for, you know, overflow parking at the spa, that there will be spaces at the El Roblar Hotel. That was very helpful. I also appreciated Ginger sharing that when the parking study was done, they took into account a spa being included, so that was very helpful. In terms of parking, what is today is not tomorrow. We can't look at, you know, there being available parking at any business on the street now and extrapolate that over five years. As we start to redevelop this part of Ojai and downtown, it's important that we look at making sure that there still is, you know, parking spaces available on the street. And so I do appreciate Jeremy, Scott, Ginger chiming in to help me find comfort here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no opinion. No, that's not true.
Jamie.
You know, and the drawing here, it's in our packet and available to you--
Yeah.
--is a good example of, this is a very slight change of materials, colors, and I think almost more important than anything, landscape. The hotel landscaping has been really terrific and a very important element of why we're getting the kind of impact we're getting on the street with the hotels, because it's been planted beautifully, it's been designed beautifully, and here is frankly, a butt-ugly cinder block, flat-roofed building, which is going to look a heck of a lot better. I mean, it's an eyesore right now, and it's an eyesore by design. It's not, you know, oh my goodness, it's sort of fallen into disuse. And now that I understand that our former colleague was baptized in the church, but the church is then torn down, I understand why we keep saying, okay, the site has had a bunch of historic uses, but it's not the buildings. And, you know, the building's uses, we had the university that was, the quote, university that was there, it was just basically an empty office building for, you know, at least the 15 years that I've been around here. So I'm pleased by this. I love the fact that it is something that the hotel guests can walk to, so it has no impact on the peak periods in terms of parking and traffic. I think that's brilliant. You know, it should increase the per-guest revenue, which should in order to the benefit of both the investors and the city itself. And it will add back an historic use, which was the spa. And, you know, when I first started coming here about 40 years ago, you know, the spa was the thing. And we're going to get a strong spa component to the facilities offered to guests at the downtown hotel. The downtown hotel is, you know, in my mind, almost perfect urban planning. It is right there next to all the amenities of the town. You can walk across the street to the park and play tennis. You've got a theater across the street. You've got wonderful shopping that you can do there, and you just park your car once and you've got a, you have a pedestrian experience. And it's the only place, except for this sort of smaller Bed and Breakfast and Sunito, where you can go and stay in town and be part of the town itself when you come here. So I'm quite excited about it, and I think it's very neat, the way the timing can work for the townspeople. There are people who have expressed in communicating with us that, isn't it too bad that this is going to be taken away from people in town because it's going to be used by the hotel guests, which is not the case. We're going to have an amenity there that the town probably couldn't support were it not for the hotel guests. So I just think it's sort of a win-win all the way around. And the leaving of the house for workforce housing, I know that they have rented apartments or, I think it's rented, not bought apartments, across the street, but they're thinking about workforce housing, and the synergy of living and working in town is wonderful, and the idea that this is going to be a source of employment that is not just waiters, you know? I mean, we've got enough, we do have enough demand. We get too much demand for waiters, but we don't have, frankly, as many, I think, opportunities for employment in the service area relating to the spa. So I think all is good. It's the employment of local people, and it means fewer cars on the road, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
I'm sorry for the fact I didn't have an opinion on the subject.
You did a great job. Nice job for not having an opinion. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is a great project. I do have some concerns. Robert has, you know, mentioned the traffic issue and parking. I think those are two big things that we really need to look at, always important to look at. And I know that, you know, we can say that there's no issue with traffic, but when you come down Ojai Avenue on a weekend, there's definitely an issue with traffic. It just depends on the time of day, et cetera, et cetera. So the more we can look to try to take traffic off Ojai Avenue, I think, the better. So I'm very encouraged that these folks are looking into different ways and being creative about how we can, you know, potentially get cars off of Ojai Avenue at different routes, et cetera. I think that is just phenomenal. I really like the idea that, you know, as most folks have mentioned, the beautification of that area, it's definitely a blight, you know, having this vacant building there, and it's been there for a long time, and it's not attractive at all. And we've seen what you guys have done with the hotel, and it's gorgeous, so, you know, what you can do with that property is, you know, we're looking forward to it. You know, I think of this, too, in looking at what we did approve this property for initially, was for affordable housing, for nine units, which was going to bring in probably, you know, we'd say 20 folks or whatnot, but that would definitely bring in more parking, definitely more traffic than this would bring in. So this has actually lower impact than what we had already approved, in my opinion. And I agree with Chair that this is almost like a net positive on the parking, because, you know, we're basically, the hotel, we already approved that parking, you know, so it's almost like this is an additional amount of parking that we'd be getting. My main concern is people crossing the street, so hopefully, you know, the applicant can work with you, Lucas, and try to figure out some solutions around that, because I think, you know, having folks running across the street at all times of the day is not ideal. And, you know, Bill had brought up the idea that, you know, people just turn left down there, and they don't really look, and I agree. So it's a dangerous, dangerous street for people crossing. You know, and I don't really have a strong opinion on the PL versus the VMU. I do kind of like the VMU idea because it promotes that workforce housing concept that Jamie articulated. So, you know, we need to have more workforce housing in our community, and I think this is a good opportunity to take advantage of that, considering it's right there. So I like that concept. So that's my opinion, is I think we, you know, we just need to be mindful of the traffic and parking. We need to be mindful of the safety issues with folks crossing the street. Regarding the PL and the VMU, again, no strong opinion there. I think, you know, as we look to, how can this benefit our community, and how does it benefit Ojai? I think there's a lot of positives. I don't see a whole lot of negatives, but, yeah, I think this is a good project. All right. Thank you, Lucas.
Yes, there's no more comments at this point, so.
I don't think so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, applicant. We move on to the next item, basically.
All right. We'll give a pause here, because I think most folks here were for this.
Quick question on the El Roblar.
Like everyone.
Is it on Signal or is it on patrol?
Yeah. All right, let's move on. What have we got next? Future agenda items?
I understand I missed, like, six meetings.
Yeah. All right, let's move on. What have we got next? Future agenda items?
I understand I missed like six meetings, four of these conversations, so I'm a little embarrassed.
I'm embarrassed. I called you the wrong name. That's horrible.
All good, all good.
I was thinking, I was thinking, I was thinking Jeremy.
Just thinking through the traffic.
Yeah, I agree.
All this has been approved?
Yeah.
It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be amazing place. Sure.
Oh, well, I think we're not done yet.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Totally good, totally good. Again, embarrassed last 20 minutes.
All right, so. We, folks, we got to continue the meeting here. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. All right, so I think next up is we have future agenda items, Director's Report, and then we'll hear from our City Council Liaison.
Yes. So, future agenda items, we are trending for October 16th. Not seeing any items that are ready for the 16th. So we're looking at potentially canceling that meeting. But on the heels of identifying that there are two fairly large items that are going to be discussed on the 6th, of which we may end up.
I would break those up.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, here, hold on one second. So the Ojai Playhouse Theater, they're considering an alternative option. So that one might actually come off the books.
Okay.
And not even be a design review permit. They were seeing that as the only option that they had to move forward. We've kind of are working at a different angle to get them to where they still need to go, right?
Okay.
Pursuant to the code, obviously. But the Ojai Cabin Village, no, that is set for.
That's set, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And I know that will be a packed house. So, yeah, anything we can do to.
Yes, because we will, with this one, we will be providing notification, you know, upon notification. So we're going to be over-delivering with the notification to the community to ensure that everybody's aware and providing an opportunity for comment.
Okay. So did you want us to discuss the cancellation on October 16th?
I think we do need to talk about the 16th as a cancellation.
Okay.
All right.
I'm okay with it.
I can handle it.
Chair?
Fine by me.
Okay. Jamie?
Yeah, fine with me.
Robert? Okay.
So this will give you plenty of rest for what we anticipate to be a very engaging November 6th meeting.
Yes. I've got a question about the Ojai Cabin Village.
Yeah.
Wait a second. Did you say you have a question about?
A question about the meeting.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Not about the substance of it.
Sounds good.
It's a question of what is going to be covered in that? And will the, does the City Council, this is going to go to the City Council after it comes to us, as I understand it, that we're.
I can talk high level.
Right.
And then I can also talk to potential location. Okay, so first is the high level.
Right.
It's going to be talking about the test fitting of this site, talking about the site itself.
Right.
And then outside factors as well.
Right.
And talking to the use now and then into the future as well.
Right.
So that's as far as I can go. There may be more information and clarity as we work through the staff report at the moment.
The.
The second, hold on. I don't know that I can go any further than that. And the reason why is because it's not an item that's on this agenda for us to be providing public notifications.
This is just a question. Are you, are we likely to be looking at alternative sites at the same time?
No.
No. So we don't need any information in preparation for this meeting on the alternate sites?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The second piece to that, not necessarily driven directly to the project at hand here, but location. We may very well end up locating at Kent Hall.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that'd be good. I don't know if we can.
Not a lot of seats here.
No.
We get more seats at Kent Hall, so it could very well be at Kent Hall.
Okay, all right. All right, good deal. Well, I think next up is you, Lucas, for Director's Report. Do you have anything? No?
Oh, I do. Yes, I do. Sorry. Something regarding staffing. So we just hired a planning aide. They accepted the position. So they're going through the background. It's a planning aide that's actually helping to support front counter services and some other pieces that have long since remained shelved. So those are going to be brought down from the shelf and we're going to start working on some of those things. Super excited to bring her on. You'll hear more about her. We'll probably have her come to one of these meetings.
Awesome. Now, are you fully staffed or is there still?
We're now fully staffed.
Wow, awesome.
Congratulations.
So it's exciting.
Yeah, that's very good.
But we are very busy. Although we have canceled one of these meetings, jeepers. There is a lot on the dock. Remember a couple of years ago, I was talking about a logjam that we had?
Oh, yeah.
Some of the commissioners are here, obviously Commissioner Graham. Not a logjam, but man, there's a lot of projects that are coming up. There's a lot of projects that are potentially on the horizon. We're not short on being busy. And the staff that we have is helping us to make sure that we're not losing our mind in terms of keeping these projects moving forward. So it's exciting.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to hear that. That's great. All right, any Commission member reports?
No.
Nope, nothing. I don't have anything either. Okay. Our City Council Liaison, Leslie, is here. All right, good deal. Absolutely. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, my goodness. This is a good meeting. I like these kinds of meetings, man. They move right along. Yes, so I don't have much to report, except for, I wanted to kind of, I'm starting to go to Commissions to explain what a rights of nature ordinance might look like and how it might affect what you do. And this is all hypothetical. But we are bringing for, we had a concept review of a rights of nature ordinance. And essentially, that means giving nature rights to survive, to flourish. We're having a community meeting on Saturday where the foremost attorney, who basically has been drafting legislation around the country, will be zooming in. So we'll have a discussion around it. I think a press release went out today for you to see. It is a way big leap for people to wrap their heads around because hitherto fore, only people and corporations have had rights. And corporations have gotten rights because they are basically run by people. Or so that's what jurisprudence and the courts have said. We, of course, in Ojai, as a fantastic thing that we did, gave elephants the right to liberty and self-determination, which just simply means you can't put them in a zoo. You know, you can't have them in a barn in Matilah Canyon like we did have. There are certain things that they are, they have a right to, which is a certain amount of space, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, that having been said, we, as Ojai, have actually given rights to an animal. It's first ever. So we're going to move forward with rights of nature and try to figure out how this actually works. And you would have a trustee for, you know, whether it be a river, whether it be, you know, whatever it happens to be flora or fauna. You would have trustees who would look after the benefit of them without prioritizing by right, the return on investment a human might get, right? Has always been the way that it has. Essentially, the idea, and I don't mean to be speaking about all this because my only job here was to tell you how it might affect a planning commission. And this is strictly hypothetical. So.
It's good to know the why.
Yeah, the why is, is that conservation EPA is now, I think it was 1972, which would make it, you know, 50 years old and it's weaker than it's ever been. And the distinction is between protections that rely upon a governmental enforcement versus rights that you can take into court and say, here, here's a right, okay? And then, so it's a completely different kind of animal. So that's the difference between like, you know, a government trying, government tried with an EPA, with the Environmental Protection Agency, and, you know, we find that they have no teeth, right? And there are many layers of bureaucracy that kind of filter down, that take even more teeth out of environmental laws and protection for nature. It is, you know, interwoven in all indigenous peoples' approach to land. We also see it happening globally. Countries, not United States. I mean, we have a common law from the, you know, the British. And basically, you know, fundamentally, it lives with property rights and the right of the individual to use, to extract, to, you know, get profit. It's an economic system as well that we need to think about. That having been said, it is a tough thing to wrap your head around. It's a tough thing to understand that you can potentially change the approach of jurisprudence towards the land. And what I've come to believe is, at one point in time, people believed that the divine right of kings was a divine right, okay? Things can change. They can change. So maybe it's time to try to do that. That having been said, I'll finally say one last thing. Everything is emergent, right? We don't know how things are going to proceed. All we can do is take that first step and rely upon goodwill and intelligence to move forward in a way that fulfills the ideals that we started with, right? We don't know, but we know that there are people smart enough to figure out how this should move forward. Whether it's our indigenous peoples or whether it's, you know, lawyers who have worked 20 years on this, who have seen, whether it's, you know, international folks who have changed the way their laws work in their country, we know that it can be done, right? We know that. We have the intelligence to do that. Humans have this incredible power to exploit and destroy. And we have this incredible power to solve problems and think through things and look beyond ourselves and our profit motive. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that is my spiel.
Quick question. Are there other cities in California doing this?
Mendocino did it.
Okay.
And they did it to stop fracking.
Okay.
So a lot of times what happens is people will focus on one thing they want to prevent. And then they will wrap it under a rights of nature. They've done it in Pennsylvania.
Okay.
So there have been places in the United States that have survived legal challenges. The vast majority don't survive legal challenges because they're not specific enough.
Right.
So our city attorney, Taylor, has delved into those, you know, we've looked at things that have survived legal challenges. And what did the findings of the judge, why did they say that this survived the legal challenge? And can we embed that in what we do? That's one of the ways that we can be smart.
Right.
Right? So, yeah, so there we go. So relative to the planning commission, here are some things, if rights of nature were to be passed, and please come on Saturday. I think it'll be a fabulous forum. It's 10 o'clock at Kent Hall. Like I said, we'll be zooming in. The foremost environmental attorney, who's been doing this around the country for 25 years, who will be answering questions. Anyway, so, okay, so its potential effects on land use is really what we're kind of thinking about. So it recognizes ecosystems and natural entities as having inherent rights, similar to how humans and corporations have rights. This approach aims to protect the environment by giving it legal standing, right? Legal standing means I can take you into court with a right. A protection is not legal standing. A protection is, you know, that's not a legal standing. So the key points for a planning commission, legal status. So I just explained this, natural entities, rivers, forests, mountains, flora, fauna, can be recognized as legal persons with rights, which means that, you know, you can, people can be sued for those who don't, you know, adhere to those rights. But mostly it comes down to environmental protection. It provides a stronger framework for conservation and for sustainable development, which means that it will come to you around sustainable development. And you will have to start thinking about other things other than just, you know, profit margin or what somebody wants to do. There are going to be other considerations for you. You know, in that you have to consider the rights and well-being of ecosystems now in your land use planning. How that plays out, absolutely no idea, okay? But it will play out at some time, eventually, because that's the point. You know, the potential effects on land use could be stricter environmental impact assessments. You know, maybe CEQA gets revised, you know, to be the small entity that many lawyers tried to make. And I mean, you know, CEQA came into effect so that you weren't building airports, you know, not to keep rivers flowing, you know? But perhaps CEQA will find a new way to find form. Don't really know. It'll be, it will probably, because of CEQA, it will add a new layer of limitations on certain types of development, just simply because you now have to weigh in on the costs of nature, the exploitation of nature, the destruction of nature, whatever it happens to be, however you kind of think about it. You know, and it might end up with prioritizing conservation and restoration projects. And it might mean changing in zoning to protect ecologically, you know, sort of sensitive areas. Yeah, so that's, you know, that's kind of just, I just wanted to give you an overview. Like I said, this is an emerging, and I don't know what it's going to look like. But I have trust that we can make it look good. We can do what we need to do.
We got Taylor.
We got Taylor. And we got, we got, you know, we got Ojai, right? We got Ojai. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I think the best thing to do, if you're available, would be to come on Saturday to the forum. And Taylor will be there. And I said, the lawyer will be zooming in and we'll be taking questions and having discussion around how this might find form. But like I said, ultimately, it will be emerging. Because who knows?
So if I could add, Councilmember Rule, thank you for such a thoughtful presentation.
Hi, Taylor.
Hi, I'm sorry I can't be there today. I have a tremendous amount of construction going on at my house and I had to be here in person at my house. So I apologize for not being there today. It was out of my control. But I just want to clarify something about the rights of nature and how it applies, at least in what council has currently approved to move forward. It would not impact planning projects. What Councilmember Rule was referencing is, when you're making recommendations to council about policies, the ordinance in its current rendition encourages commissions to think about the rights of nature, as council has adopted them in their policymaking decisions and recommendations as a consideration. So this wouldn't be something that you would consider on every project, but in furtherance, similar to like, no, it's just with policy. When you're considering policies, it would be rights of nature. The current draft is very pollution focused, so not polluting water, not polluting hillsides, mountains, and impacting the flora and fauna that are within the city's boundaries. There's two key points that will allow for that. The first one is a prohibition on polluting waters within Ojai. And it is limited to the space of Ojai because that is what we can legally control. And then it is a prohibition on using phosphate fertilizers and selling them and advertising for the sale of them. And then there's additional policy built in, which would allow for folks to have managed native landscapes. So encouraging replacement of plants that have maybe been replaced, like with grass or non-native plants, to things that are local to California and preferably Ojai Valley, if you can make that happen. So I just wanted to add those clarifying points for you. And I will also, like she said, be there live and in person. So it would be great to see all of you. It's definitely very interesting. And we've been on quite a fun journey together to get this created and up and out. So, and then I will leave you to it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, and I will just point out that Taylor is the lawyer and is being very specific. And I'm being very philosophical and taking. And I'm being very philosophical and taking, you know, sort of a 35,000-foot approach. So I appreciate that, bringing it down to, to the ground, down to earth for us, Taylor, because it's true. It, you know, it may not even apply to you as we move forward with this particular ordinance, but we would like you to keep it in your head as we move forward. Yeah, so, so thank you, Taylor. Because I'm like, yeah, rights of nature, love you.
It's okay. I'm a professional wet blanket.
I apologize, but I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Admire the effort for sure. All right, good deal. Well, I think with that, we will call adjournment at 8:10. Oh, 8:12.